We can call the special board trustees meeting to order for December. I guess this is technically on December 1st. This meeting is being reported and it's being streamed on Facebook Live, I believe. I would like to ask who wants to be a timekeeper. I think you continue with the streak. Zach completed the timekeeper for today, thank you very much. Since we're in person, Sarah, we don't need to roll call or anything to call attendance, do we?
No, because there's nobody.
Yeah, we do have a call. There's no one on the phone yet. There might be people dialing in. Belle, do we have anybody for public comment? I don't see anybody in the room.
No.
All right. Moving on, since we have no public comment. I will take a motion to approve the minutes from the October 27 board meeting. That's our regular board meeting first, which was in your packet.
I'll move to approve the minutes for October 27.
And I'll second.
Second by Sheila. Those in favor? Aye. Anybody against? The motion passes unanimously. And the second vote is for the special meeting that we had for the approval of the drawings, move the budget forward for the building project, which was the November 17 meeting. So we hear a motion to approve those minutes.
Motion to approve.
Nick, second by Sammy. Those in favor? Aye. Anybody against? And the motion passes unanimously. Right, the next vote, maybe a little bit of an explanation, we just discussed this in governance, so we have a recommendation from governance to move forward with this. You may remember, we talked a couple times in a couple of the past meetings about creating a position called the Director of Capital Projects, and we had not moved forward with that because we were considering different options on how to do that. After a discussion with our lawyer and the different feedback that we got from the Mass Chartered School Association and whatnot, we actually decided to do it as a new position reporting to the board, as opposed to something that would be within the structure of the school, which would mean that we would hire, the board would hire this person. And again, the intention is, Ms. Nissin has expressed her intention to stay in the school after her retirement and take that job for supporting the buildup of the buildup project and capital campaign. So that's, I know we've talked about it in the past, so it's nothing new here. What we did do in governance was go through the proposal and the changes that we need for the bylaws. Those changes were reviewed, also these has expressed that they're going to put that through, you know, they have to approve this. So all we're doing today is voting on putting that forward as an amendment. We can't vote on it until D's approves it, but with our vote today, we would be able to submit it to these. They have said that they can respond to that pretty quickly, that we don't have to wait till January or anything, because they understand we're going through this. We actually, Sarah, did a great job putting a packet together that has everything.
And also, just that once they approve it, from the commission approval, it will be effective at that time.
Okay. Now, do we have to vote again?
No.
No, so we don't need another vote after we take this vote. So I know the actual wording and the bylaws content was part of the packet. We just discussed it in governance and we voted to move forward with that proposal. Are there any questions? Does anybody need more details about this new position that we're creating or the bylaws changes?
One question. Was there any changes that came out of governance discussion from the packet that we received?
No. And the changes to the bylaws, just to be clear, is very simple. The bylaws say that we, the board only hires executive director and potentially an interim executive director. Those are the only two positions that existed up until now that the board could hire for. All we did was create a third one that is a, the wording was important. If the board deems necessary, then we could hire a director of capital projects as another position reporting to the board. So the addition was adding that wording, that if deemed necessary, this is the job that we could hire for, and it adds a description of what that job entails. So that job description is also part of the bylaws. There's also a more detailed job description that we're submitting with a request to these, but the actual bylaws change, all it says is that if the board deems necessary, we can hire this position, director of capital projects, and this is what that position entails, and that's basically it. So there are no questions?
So I make a motion to approve the amendment to the bylaws for the director of capital planning.
Projects.
Project.
Second?
Second. Who is that?
Seven. All right, those in favor? Aye. Anybody against? No, the motion passes unanimously. Should thank you everybody, and thank you, Ellen, for considering being part of our future even after you're well deserved stepping down. But I think it goes a long way having you around and the support that you, you know, the changes you made to the school over the last few years. I think, speaking for myself, having you in a transition mode is much better than not. So I do look forward to that, to this coming forward. All right, so I think those were the votes we had. I believe the consent agenda items are mostly from finance, and we don't require any votes or any discussion, and we'll let the finance committee add to that if needed. So with that, unless anybody has any questions that wants to bring it up out of the consent agenda.
I just have one question about the moving from an uninsured to an insured account. I'm not sure who the length and answer it, but what does that entail? And is that something that the finance committee has already discussed and there's nothing here for us to worry about?
So the question of the microphone, still picked it up, I was going to say, it's what does it entail to move from an uninsured account to an insured account? So I don't know, Roger, if you want to take a ballot.
So the accountants noticed that we, our money is currently in a money market account rather than in a FDIC insured account, and we are basically going to be moving the money to the insured account, to what we initially approved. It was just a transition, the state, when we moved banks to using Boston Private as our bank.
Does that entail any change in interest rates at, or just the fees that go with it?
No change in fees. The insured account pays about currently 1% less than the money market account. And the rates will vary over time.
Any other questions, finance? All right. So with that, we move to the reports. You want to start with the capital campaign reporter, with Ellen's?
I have one slide. Would you like it?
Mixed together?
Combine it. Ellen has numbers.
All right, there you go. Combine executive director.
Yeah.
So.
I don't think, just I need to get it on my slide. Yeah.
All right, so I'll turn it over to the Ellen Moore of the way.
I didn't send it. Did you say something? Yeah, I didn't send it report. Oh, don't worry. All right, well, here we are. It's nice to see everyone. Thank you for your support, everyone, on the years ahead or next year or so. So here we are, it's December 1st, kind of hard to believe. Mike, are you going to click for me? Thank you very much. Okay, so a quick overview of our report tonight. We're going to talk about SAT data, but I think it might be more of a discussion that we can have. There's a lot of changes happening with SAT. The deeper I got looking through the numbers, the more interesting it was for me. SAT and college application is kind of my bag, right? So 100%, I've been having a good time talking about that. AP rankings, we're going to talk a little bit about that. So we talked, I gave you all the AP reports and the SAT reports back, I think it was September, October. Each year, for those of you who are new on the board, the state takes a look and they put together the scores, they break it up for all the schools in the state. And so what I typically will do is I'll take our scores and I'll fit it in, right? And there's a lot of overlaps, and a lot of it is, you know, separated by one point and all. And we kind of make up our own rankings. Now, I will say that on the website, they say this is not a ranking, the state does not rank, but just kind of to compare and fit in where we are against other folks. So we'll look at that. Quick, one slide there on the managing campaign update, and we have a new AMSA committee. It's called, because we love a good committee, don't we, Zach? We love a good committee. And so we have a new committee that I'm going to tell you about, and a little razzle-dazzle time, and then our upcoming events, which that page is getting longer and longer. Next one. All right, so first of all, before we ever talk about scores or anything like that, we want to always remember, and we do each and every day, to thank our teachers for all the work that they do with our students. Because without all that work, from sixth grade all the way through, the students don't have the foundation that they need to have in order to be successful. So we thank all our teachers, we also thank our students, because they're the ones who actually are sitting there and going through these exams, which, you know, can be, can be really difficult for some of them. So just thank you to everyone and to our families also, and the support that they give our students and give our teachers. Next one, Mike? Okay, so what's the deal with the SAT? This has been quite a topic, actually, lately. There's a couple articles there that you can, you can take a look at. On this slide is just kind of to set the stage so that you can think maybe, or start thinking about the SAT in different terms. And I know the ed committee has already been talking about this, and, you know, is the SAT going to be something that we can really use in the future to determine a measure excellence here at AMSA or not? So we now know that about 80% of the colleges and universities are currently test optional, right? Or some of them are just saying, no tests at all, we're test blind, we're not even accepting them, some of them are optional, and these are including now Harvard, Brown, Columbia, Cornell, Penn, Dartmouth, and Stanford. So this, these are not, you know, some of the small liberal arts colleges out somewhere. These are the big names, and it's 80% of them. Now, some of them are saying, we're just going to be test optional for a year or two, or watching our data. Some of them have already declared, we are not using the SAT, the ACT any longer. So to me, what's really interesting about this is that once families, parents, and students start accepting this, and they're seeing their friends getting into Harvard without an SAT, why take the SAT? To Facebook, I'm not just saying the SAT. But why would you put yourself through a four-hour exam that is literally not going to be looked at potentially down the line? And some of, you'll read in one of those articles there, it was from, it was NBC, I think, that first article. But some of them are actually saying that they find that they're getting a much more diverse and still a very, very strong class. So they'll be still looking at their data, but Harvard right now is saying that they're not going to consider it again, I think, until 2026. So that's, that's a long time. So it really changes the face, and it could make really mental changes to the college application process, right? And this could take, could lead to less students taking the exam, less focus on test prep. Think about the hundreds of thousands of dollars that parents have spent over the years across the country on test prep. And of course, if you start thinking about like the companies who support these exams, forget about College Board, but all the other industry out there. This could be a thing of the past, okay? So it really could be changing the face of college applications and whole process. So, you know, how are the decisions being made? They're being made, you know, just more looking at GPA, the strength of the school that the kids are coming from. The essay is going to ever important. Those letters of recommendation are going to be very important. The strength of our academic program is going to be very important. And so we're going to need to be looking at new ways for our kids to differentiate themselves, to show their talents. Raul and I and Dawn were talking about this earlier today. You know, maybe the internship program is really going to start taking a front in, at AMSA in the years to, to our future, and something for the ed committee to look at too, is what are different ways that we can support our students in having very, very strong applications, when so many have depended for so many years on SAT scores, right? We definitely, there's students in, out in the world who may not do very well in class or their GPA may be eh eh, but all of a sudden, they pull perfect scores just about on SATs and the colleges balance that out. If they're not looking at them, that's not going to be an opportunity, so we're going to have to find other ways to support them. But just an interesting conversation, something to be, to be thinking about, and I think something that I know the ed committee is already looking at, but should continue to. So, I learned something new this year. A few years ago, College Board put out a new SAT report, and I used the information from that on the last time that I talked to you about SAT scores. But what I, what I came to find out was that those, okay, so the information that I presented to you a couple months ago, those are cohort scores, which means those are just for a senior class. So a cohort's class, a cohort average mean score would be from, let's say, the class of 2022. The way that they pull those average scores is they say, every student who took a test were going to take their best reading and they're going to take their best math, and that's what they're going to report, then they're going to create the mean on that. So if a child took the SAT 10 times, they're still going to take the top and just count that child once, okay? So those cohort scores are only, they only count the class. The academic year scores, which are the scores, Roger, that I know we've been looking at in, on the state website, and this is why I'm going to differentiate, because I'm actually going to split it up on different slides for you. They include any child who took the SAT during that academic year. And keep in mind that ninth graders can take the test. I've actually seen ninth graders take the test. I had one when I was counseling here, as a ninth grader, got a near-perfect score and never took it again. So this is the, you're talking about academic, you're not looking at the senior class that's graduating, you're looking at a wide variety of ages, and maturity, and readiness, and all of that. So just a little something that I learned, and I'm going to split it up for you in a minute to get some interesting information. Okay. So what they did here was I, this is cohort, okay? This is cohort for the class of 2019, 2020, 2021, and 2022. And this is a comparison between AMSA scores, Massachusetts scores in the blue, and national scores in the yellow. We've been reading a lot about the drop in scores and reading and ready, in college readiness across the country, so we wanted to see where AMSA lines up to that and how the scores have changed through COVID. So remembering again, these are the graduating classes, and you can see in 2019, our combined score, so it's those two, the English and the math added together, obviously. We were at like 1286, and then in 2020, it went to 1292. And also remembering that these are individual classes of kids with their own culture and personality, right? These are not the same kids taking these tests, because this is cohort. Up to 1292, then back to exactly 1286 in 2021, and then to 1279, the class of 12, of 22. So if you, if you're only looking at the difference between pre-COVID in 2019 and post, you know, 2022, this last year, the difference went down about seven points combined. It's not, it's not really that much. When you're looking at the state, I mean, I think what we noticed right away is, of course, when you're looking at the country, you're looking at about 1,000 combined, you're in the 1100s here for the, for the state, and AMSA is still in the, in the 1,200s, which I think is really good news for us, although we still have obviously a lot of work to do ahead. But I think that that, you know, is, of course, as the group gets bigger, those, you're dividing by, by more and more students, and you're having a wider range of kids taking the test as well. So I thought this was a kind of interesting, the fact that the class of 2021 is like kind of a high score for, for each one, the state and for the, for the national, I thought that was interesting. And also, when you're looking at the state numbers, they were 1120 in 19, they're 1128, so I have that they're up eight, but they actually, in 2021, they were up to 1184. And then it fell way down. So that's a little bit of what you're hearing in the state, although it doesn't, it looks like they're actually up when you compare it to pre-COVID. So just an interesting thought. And then the national numbers, they're down nine points, 1059 to 1050. Any questions or anything on, on that? I mean, I think what it shows is when you're comparing Massachusetts and nationally, AMSA's still doing very well, we've taken a little dip, but it changes year to year and class to class as well. So I think it's just something for, for us to watch. But any questions or anything on the cohort numbers? No? Okay, Mike, thanks. So this, this is also, this is the ranking, that what I do is I take our scores and I fit it into the state's scores. And what you're, what we're seeing here is when you take all of the students, and then you can see up here, right, in 18, we had 185, then we had COVID, it was down to 106. 164, but we're up to 211 tests, so the, the number of kids who took tests, because they're still individuals, is much higher. And now we're mixing in the younger kids as well, right? You're mixing in the 11th graders, so. But we have a dip in, a dip in math, if we're comparing ourselves across the state, and a more significant dip in the reading/writing section. So, you know, that's definitely something for us to look at. Is this a blip? Is it, is it something bigger than that? And the students would have been during the COVID years, would have been in those really developmental years of, you know, eighth, ninth, 10th grade. So this is definitely something we need to, you know, highlight and, and address.
Question on counting, so this is an exam taken, this, if a student.
Oh, it was an exam taken, you're right.
If a student took the exam three times, would they show up three times in that list?
Yeah, you're right. That's another one of your, right, that's another one of the differences between the cohort and, and this, this number here. In fact, the cohort packet that the College Board puts out right now, which is, has great information in it, and that's where it breaks it up into all the demographics and everything. They're very specific about, you cannot compare those cohort numbers with anything that the states put out. So I thought that was an interesting distinction as well, and that's why I tried to separate it. Because I think it was important for you all to see, in the cohort, cohort numbers still look strong. So by the time the kids are, you know, graduating, they're leaving those SAT scores after they're taking them a few times, look, look, still look strong, but when you start adding in, you start to, I think, you start to see the gaps and the weaknesses, right? And then the question is, well, the kids already started hearing in the spring that SATs didn't matter. Did they matter less to them? Did they prep less? Did they take it fewer times? And if they started getting that message then, what's going to happen this year? So this is something that the ed committee needs to look at, especially when we're talking about new accountability plan that we're going to be creating in 2024. You know, what's excellence at AMSA, and what's going to continue to be relevant in the years ahead? Any other questions on this? The change in landscape.
My question mostly is around, not, maybe I missed this, but I, you, in your previous slide, you talked about the absolute scores for cohorts, which is what we look back here.
Yes.
What are the rankings for the cohorts themselves?
You can't fit these rankings into anything in Massachusetts, which is stated in the cohort document that College Board puts out, because the state doesn't ever look at cohorts, at least what they publish on the website. On the next slide, you could go right into those profiles there and, and see exactly what I see, but it is going to be academic year scores, not cohort scores. They just don't publish them. Now, I'm not saying that they couldn't, but it's not the way they publish it.
So it's hard to tell whether, when we look at the rankings, if we're able to, or two things. We could tell though, if we have a larger proportion of younger students taking the SAT, and whether we're closing the gap after they get closer to their junior and senior years. And that would be a good statistic for us to look at, because this to me doesn't quite paint the full picture for what it is that we're doing in the house.
The ranking number is fake, right? So it, because it specifically says on the D's website, state does not rank. But years ago, I was asked to take the scores and to fit them into those numbers. So I would say, okay, I'm number 662 in math, so I look at the whole list, you know, put it in, in number order, and figure out like, okay, we're number, you know, we fit between Sudbury and, you know, Mass Academy, and I put it there, right? So they, they were not something that, that's official, it was something that I used to help the board kind of gauge where we were falling in.
Ellen?
Yes.
Do they show, do they give any information on the distribution of age levels that take the test?
No.
Right? Because that would be really important.
That would be. Now, can we get that data? Can you, I mean, yes, we can look at every single student's score, and we can look at all the 11th graders and.
But we'd want to also look at the distribution of, of the other towns, because if we're like, if we have more younger kids.
I don't think we can do that.
Yeah, I'm just saying, if we have more younger kids, which I believe, taking the SATs compared to other towns, those other town scores are going to be up, a bias up. You know, their scores are going to be higher because there, there are more older kids taking SATs in other towns.
What I saw actually was, the smaller the school, the smaller number, the better the kids did. So if they just had 25, or they just had 60 kids take the test, their scores actually were higher. The two, the number one for, for both sections was Mass Academy, which isn't a public school, right? And they've got 20, 20, 25 students per grade, so 25 11th grade, 25 12th grades. So that's, it's very, very hard. When I looked at those, you know, Anandras and I were talking, some of the top schools, Lexington, right, they had over 600 tests taken. Acton Bucksboro was another one, who had a large number. And so when you look at those numbers, you say, wow, that's impressive, they got that many kids with those scores, that's, that's really impressive. And, oh yeah, this school got 25 kids to do really well. It's, it's kind of apples and oranges, but it's something that I was asked to do years ago, so we try.
Can I, a question, so why is the trend growing for like a freshman or sophomore to take the SATs? If it's traditionally like across the state or across the nation, something people would do more as a junior? And then if that trend is growing, and you see it continue growing, then, yeah, should the scores continue to be used in this way, knowing younger, less prepared students are taking it?
So it's a family decision, right? And sometimes families will read an article where it's recommended, and, and they'll, they'll choose to have a child do it. Some schools, if they, if the kids are applying to private schools, it can be part of the admission process.
For private high school?
For private high school, right. They, they actually apply and they, they want to see where the student is. There's any number of reasons, they feel like if they take it over and over again, they'll, they'll do better. Scholarships, it can be a number of reasons, but it's a family decision, and we administer the PSAT here, which helps prepare the students. But if the kids aren't taking SAT, they're going to want to take the PSAT, I mean, just it's all going to tumble, I think. And, but we don't administer the SAT here, so we don't really have any control over how many times they take it, or where they take it.
Okay, no, I didn't know if it was a trend and maybe guidance counselors were encouraging it.
No. No, I mean, I, as I mentioned, I had a student when I worked here at AMSA, who took it as a ninth grader, and I only knew because we were talking and there it was on audience. Like, what did you do? You know, you took it as a ninth grader, right? But, but he did very, very well as a ninth grader, just kind of showed where, where he was. But he could have been applying to, to private schools. So, no, they would never, if anything, school counselors try to calm families down and let your child develop and take your time and, and don't push these things too much. I think that we're really looking at a complete change in how the, our country views standardized tests. It's probably a good reason for it. I believe there's good reason for it, and we'll see where it heads, but something we definitely will be watching and, and talking about. about.
Do you think you're going to be focusing on the stats that we have during the terms? I mean, we talk a lot about that, say to you, after you spend the first ten minutes and it's not as important as we, and the case of society is not moving in that direction. I would say then, what kinds of benchmarks should we be thinking about for student success?
Yep. That's what I was talking about, the Ed Committee. Yep. I think that that's a topic for the Ed Committee. They've already started talking about it.
Sorry, I missed that.
And other ways to strengthen students and to really have them stand out, internships and things.
Sure. So you're saying that from more a college admissions perspective?
Oh, but for accountability? Yeah, we talked about having to change the accountability plan in 2024, so, yes.
Ellen, I have one more question.
Sure.
We, in the past, we've put so much emphasis on that U.S. News and World Report ranking. And I think they do look at our scores. And I'm just wondering, they're going to have to change the way they measure as well. And I don't know if there's any way for us to even get some information on like what their approach is going to be in the future.
That's interesting. They do, they have six criteria. One of them, I believe, is college readiness.
Exactly.
Right? And so there's probably multiple things that they put in there. But, yeah, you're absolutely right. I don't think AP is going anywhere anytime soon. So, you know, we need to continue to prepare our students to take those types of classes. You know, but there's also, there's also issues with them as well. I wonder, and it can be kind of concerning as a former school counselor, of students overpacking themselves with AP and the anxiety and stress that that can create. Because what else are you going to have, except that transcript that has a GPA and then you get the extra weight into the AP and all that? It's...
I mean, that's what you hear every college board gone on this year. They basically say, we want to see how many AP classes you're taking. So they're telling my students to load up on AP classes, because that's what we want to see on your transcript.
Yes. Yes. And remembering too, that's then the kids take all those classes and then they may find out that the college doesn't accept them.
Yes.
Right? And so we often have kids that take it, then they take the class, they plan on and sometimes pay for the exam, then they find out the college that they're going to doesn't take it, and they're like, well, then I'm not taking the exam. And then they don't take the exam. Also, one hundred and seven or one hundred and three dollars for every single one of those exams? I've seen kids pay seven hundred dollars when I was a counselor here to take seven AP exams. So let's, you know, let's talk about equity with all of that, too. So, anyway, so fun to talk about. Anyone wants to talk about, I could, I can talk about this stuff for hours.
And Ellen, I think it's a good opportunity to bring this up, kind of a plot for strategic planning, which we're going to talk a little bit more about in a minute. But these are the kinds of things that as a board we do as choosing or shaping the vision of the school. We say very easily, well, we're a culture of excellence and that's what we want, that's who we want to be. But it's very hard to figure out how do we measure that? So this is a good example. Well, at some point in the accountability plan, we said that SAT scores were a good way to measure excellence. And we're saying, well, SAT scores may mean something different depending on how important they are for the kid's future, because they may or may not be considered. So what is our measure of excellence? So we need to figure that out. So it's not anything...
Absolutely.
...question to answer, but it's a strategic planning kind of question, so we can bring it up in the strategic planning process.
It's a great one. It's really something kind of you can hold on to and be solid about, because when you start talking about MCAS, you know, that's minimum, right? That's minimum level. And our kids typically well, well exceed that. So that doesn't show our excellence. APs aren't taken by every student, so now you're not seeing the growth necessarily there. And I think the thing that worries me about GPAs and classes and things like that is that it's so different at all different schools. What's an A at ANSA may not be, or what's a B at ANSA may be an A plus someplace else, right? And so we need to think about that with the students' transcripts as well. And then that leads back to our reputation as a school. And the kids that we've already put out into the schools, right? And they track them, they know where they came from, they know what the school is, they know if they're successful on the campus. So that when they see our kids' transcripts come in, they say, this is a kid from ANSA and we know him. And we know that school. And we had a lot of those relationships already, but we're eighteen years old, we've only had since 2011, kids graduating from here. So that's going to continue to be really important, that our alumni are going to open the doors for our current students.
Ellen, I definitely look forward to talking with you and Anders about, you know, how, I'm going to keep, like what both you and I have said, that how do we measure excellence?
Cooking with oil, right? That memory of that old doctrine, cooking with oil, that informed our accountability plan, and then COVID happened, and it changed everything. All the things we were measuring sort of don't exist or they're not the same anymore.
Well, I think it's important to keep in mind, I mean, kind of living in the world of higher ed, that colleges are moving more away from these tests because they've also proven to not be the best indicator of success. They've proven to have significant issues when it comes to equity, student socioeconomic background. So as we think about what other indicators we want to use, thinking about that, I mean, it could, it's kind of a problem across the board when it comes to these standardized test scores. And while it's an easy number, so it's an easy thing to use to measure excellence, it's really not the best indicator.
At your idol, thank you. You sang my song there. It's very, very true.
I agree.
And when you read the articles, I'm sure you have, because you're involved in, on the other side of things, they're finding that getting much more diverse classes and strong students. And I think, I think this might be the way of the future. I'm jumping up and down excited inside. Okay. Alrighty. Okay, so now AP, this is something a little different once again. You know, if we lose SAT and what happens to College Board and then what happens to AP, you know, it's really interesting. Alrighty, so this, once again, these are the made up rankings, sort of, when I go in, you can go into the state report link on the bottom. And that's across the years, from all the years I've been doing board reports, it's getting a little, see, it's time for me to go. It's getting full. So, you know, from these, yeah, these are percentages of three plus. And all of you saw this, the eighty-nine, ninety-two, eighty-eight, eighty-nine. And then putting those into the state, that's about where we have been over the years. So between, you know, thirteen to twenty-seven on our percentages of three plus. And the state... Okay. This is the number of tests taken, sorry. This is the percentages of three plus. And the state, so you can see the eighty-five, they were eighty-seven, you were eighty-nine. Still keeping a step ahead. And then this is our state ranking where we're falling in on the percentages. What the, I'm looking at this going, what did I do?
The cohort reports are the entire college board, and then the state is specific to the students.
Oh, gosh, thank you so much. It's got too late. Okay. So yes, when you compare the College Board numbers and then the state reporting numbers, that's where we fall in as far as the rank, the state ranking is concerned. And part of, I've been using this slide now for so long, part of the differences on these is the fact that any test that less than ten students have taken, they don't count it into the score. So that's the difference there. But the twenty... These are, so our AP classes, and this is different, it's, talk about, you know, apples and oranges as well. Our students start taking AP in tenth grade. So, you know, we've got several AP Euro, AP Computer Science, that are predominantly taken by tenth graders, although they can be taken by older students. And then you have AP Psychology that only twelfth graders take. It's never room for anyone younger typically. So, but some schools have ninth graders take AP exams, and for some of them, it's actually a leveling thing, where they'll have ninth grade Biology, they'll have a CP level, they'll have an honors level, and they'll have an AP level. Now, we make sure that our students have seen a lot of Biology before they get into AP Bio, but not all schools do it that way. And that can be why sometimes they have less students getting the three plus, because they're much younger and perhaps not ready to take that test. So the AP, you know, the AP scores are still looking good, they're still, you know, basically in the range. And you can take a look as well at the, this is interesting, because you really, you can sort it so that it's by percentage scores. And then you can see the bigger schools, and it'll tell you how many students are in school and all that, so you can kind of compare, because it is tough to compare equally. Mike?
Ellen, just one question on that slide. It looked like we got, we have less, a lot less people taking the test? Is that what the thirty-three and the four thirteen?
Yeah, yeah, it is. It sometimes is the number of just students enrolled in AP. It could be the smaller class, like I remember, I was this counselor for 2015, sixteen, that was the bubble class, we had one hundred and eighty-one kids that we graduated. Typically, our senior classes are like in the one-thirtieth range. So it depends. Yep. And how many are offered. There's been times when we've had four AP Stats classes, but not every year. It goes by interest and what they sign up for. All right. So this is our little update slide. So Marcy, she is up and running. I've been, for those who I've spoken to recently, she has been an absolute game changer for my life. She is amazing. I wish we had hired her a year ago. She's so organized, she's so on top of it, she knows what she's doing. Laura's not with her, she's not with others as well. She's going to be a great, she is a great addition to our team. She, let's see, so one of the first things that we've done, as she's digging into absolutely everything, is we've split up the Imagine Committee. So we had a pretty good sized committee, but it became very clear that there was two interests. And they were kind of taking up each other's time, right? There's folks that want to do events and they love the idea of doing that, and that's fantastic. We need that outreach because it's visibility, right? And then we have folks who really want to work on major gifts. So we're splitting, we're splitting those two groups up. She's added new content and updated content to the campaign page. Thank you, Mike Finkel, who's been working with her on that. She's also in the process of creating a marketing and a solicitation toolkit. And she will be working with all of you in January for a little bit of time during strategic planning meeting. And she will give you the toolkit and train you on how to use that. We're looking for locations for house parties. We're going to have one a quarter, or, yeah, one a quarter. And so if you have a home that you would like to open up to us to have a little house party, invite some of your friends over, we'll invite some folks over to talk about the school and our project. So that's exciting. She has actually a calendar, I'm sure you'll see it in January, where she's got it broken up, everything that we're going to be doing quarter by quarter, and it looks great. We're also going to have monthly coffee tours that can be planned here at the school. So lots, lots going on. So to date, we have raised two hundred and thirty-one thousand, four hundred and fifty-eight dollars. So that's not really an accurate number, because the software does not count reoccurring gifts. So let's say you made a reoccurring gift of twenty-five dollars a month, but maybe for an unlimited period of time or multiple years, it's only going to show the twenty-five dollars that you put in each month. So right now, for some reason, this software that we got is limited on pledges. So you can't say, I want to make a pledge of X number of dollars, I'm going to front the first year payment, and I'm going to spread it out over four or five years or three years. And so we're working on that. And there's a possibility we may look at other software, although this is the old standby, it's been around for a long, long time, people love it. It, I think it's kind of like Reddiker, where it's just kind of outdated a little bit. Because there's so much more we want to be able to do, we don't have the flexibility of it. So we did our little Giving Tuesday program, right? You know, got your little text. So that was kind of fun. We actually received fourteen gifts, like in twenty-four hours, and we raised twenty-eight hundred and five dollars just in that. So that was kind of fun. So we'll keep doing things, you know, like that. One of the things we have done is we've pulled the bricks down a little bit in priority. She wants to put those out later as more of a way to kind of end the campaign rather than having it, you know. So if anyone asks you about the bricks, let them know that we have all the orders, it's all saved, Sarah tracks everything meticulously, and then they'll be reintroduced. So that, any questions on the update there? It's pretty exciting.
Just to be clear on the house party access, it would be just an event where we invite the community to do so myself?
It would probably be like small gatherings, from what I understand, that they're very effective. So you could invite some of your friends, we would invite some other folks that we know live maybe in your area, invite them in, we do a small presentation, and then, you know, talk about the program, kind of like a little mini kickoff like we did in October. So, yeah, that's the idea. Joni can volunteer.
Joni's an amazing...
Joni is an amazing person. Okay. All right, so here's the next one. It's our new committee. It's the Building Beautification Committee. And this is the idea of Mr. Peter Peru, who is our DEI coordinator. We want to beautify and make the building look more inclusive and more representative of our, of our students and teachers and staff. And so he put out an email yesterday, I think. And in no time at all, he had ten excited members that are very excited. And he's got a group of folks, like he wanted a couple of teachers from the high school and the two from the lower school, and students from the class of twenty twenty-three and twenty twenty-four. You know, so it's pretty exciting. He's super excited about it. I just took some pictures, these are all off Google, just to kind of give you an idea of some of the things that we're looking at. The art teachers were informed, gee, oh, as soon as I got back from school, that they can, you know, do it with class, AP Art, and we'll give you a space or stairwell and you can paint it up. And now that we own our buildings, I, you know, our middle school looks kind of like a prison. Right? Right? Yeah, these are kids, they're little kids, and we should be able to just have wonderful, colorful things all over the walls. So anyway, those are just some things I thought, I thought were fun, just to kind of give you an idea of what we can do.
I do have to say, the email that came out that said, "Join the BBC," as it said with no other information, was very confusing.
So that's like this fun little piece of news. Okay. And a little razzadazzle. Okay, so all the words are here, just so that, you know, you can look at it later. This is on the website, but Jess Bowen, who is an amazing, amazing teacher and friend, she puts together some of the coolest projects with her AP, this is microeconomics, she also does macroeconomics, she does government, she does all kinds of things. But they each won, so you can see that they received instruction forms there. There's a cost associated with each marshmallow and with each toothpick. And then they had, so the goal of a team was to design a profitable building, accounting for material fixed costs and potential revenue for each level. And also they got extra bonus if the strength and it would stay up straight. And so...
That is familiar.
There's other photos of Jess standing there with a little roar, trying to see how tall they were. And, you know, I don't know if you can see some, see this, but his eyes are absolutely sparkling. These girls are glowing, and they just had a fantastic time. We loved going to Jess's classes. And it was interesting for the kids to learn, among other things, she says, that the tallest tower wasn't necessarily the most profitable, right? So, anyway, great lesson and thought you'd think that was fun. Next one. And this was a Day of the Dead celebration. So Spanish National Honor Society, done by our Spanish teachers, Sarah Preston and Ms. Auntie Ega. And they work, this happens every year, they work with Ms. Maykin, who's our AP, and she teaches all the art classes here in the high school. And they work collaboratively to teach the students about the Day of the Dead, which is a Mexican holiday where the families welcome back the souls of their deceased relatives. And they do a beautiful job designing those and then actually creating them. And that's a little bit of our cultural diversity. Next one, Mike? Upcoming events, coming up on December ninth and tenth, Is Drama Society is doing much of nothing, they were actually in here practicing during governance tonight. They were actually in here practicing during governance tonight. Holiday staff party, we're all very, very much invited. Love to have you there. We will be having dinner 4:00 PM at the Apex Center on December 13th. So please, please join us if you'd like to come. And once again, lottery applications that opened up November 18th to February 3rd. They're doing all kinds of orientations, virtual. They're, those dates and times are also on the website. Winter Concert Night. Now, we've often done Arts Night and then it got canceled and all. So what we're actually going to do this year, so Winter Concert Night, that's the band with Ed Harlow. It's also archipelago and it is the chorus. And so they'll, they'll have their winter concert night here on the 24th at 6:00. And I have our little Blood First Strategic Planning Meeting, 9:00 AM on Saturday, the 28th. We will have lunch for you. We'll do it up here in the upper school cafeteria. It's going to be a wonderful day. We're going to get so much done. And then the Arts and Science Night, which was something that we combined last year and they really liked it. Parents loved it. They came and they ate. It was a lovely night. We're going to do that. It's planned from May 18th at 5:00. Prom, just so you know, is May 19th. And the graduation class of 2023 is June 9th at 6:00 PM. There is a rain date too, just in case. But it's going to be a beautiful, beautiful night. It always is. And we're really excited about it. Mike, is that the last slide or did I say goodbye slide? Okay, that's good. All right. So any questions about any of those or anything else that's come to mind? No? All right. Thank you so much for being here.
Thank you very much, Ellen. And Martha, do you have anything to add to the capital campaign? That was pretty thorough.
That was extremely thorough. Those were all my notes and the tab of the Development Committee of questions. That was fine. I don't mind at all.
Any other comments or questions for Ellen? Anything we want to bring back? All right. So with that, I guess we'll move on to the faculty, to your representative report.
Okay. Couple things. One, just about the school schedule, which as we know is always shifting, always changing. More day-to-day operations, but it was a request from some teachers just to, when planning the schedule, that the scheduling team, if possible, try to have teachers that are teaching the same course have one prep together so that they can discuss it. So for example, I'm teaching Intro Latin, as is Maria Artiaga. If we can try to have the same prep together. Now that being said, the schedule is always difficult. It's always complicated. Teachers understand that. It was just something that they wanted noted. The other one was a note for the Executive Director Search Committee. Just that, and I think part of this is coming from a lack of understanding of the teachers of what Ellen's role is going to be continuing from this point. There was some concern about finding a candidate who would be able to handle the fundraising that the school would need. And, you know, looking outside of the school, looking at external candidates and trying to find someone like that. The bigger piece of this was also that this particular person wanted noted that they would really prefer someone who was, at some point, an educator and understood what it was to be a teacher and what the day-to-day of a teacher's life was like. And they just wanted that raised and brought before the board and especially the Search Committee. And that was all my notes.
And just to clarify from the, what the Search Committee has done, and I think we've spoken about it and we'll provide it in the update as well, but part of the process of the Search Committee was having the search firm common conduct and assessment and bunch of interviews here. So there's been, I mean, always keep the feedback coming. That's helpful. Absolutely, we should bring it up. But we have heard that through those interviews and that process was meant just for that, just to make sure that teachers, and teachers and everybody in the community had an opportunity to see what kind of gear we're looking for. And that shared the job description that I got published. Anyway, I'm not going to steal from the, given the update on the search, but it is part of the process. So appreciate that comment up again. It's, it's good to remind ourselves what everybody's looking for in the Executive Director. So thank you. Thank you for bringing that up. And hopefully what we did today with the approval of the bylaws goes a long way to clarifying the plan that we're making with Ellen for her involvement after 2030. So as we have more concrete things, we'll continue to share those news. But that's, that's where we are right now. So hopefully that will help people understand what her role is with the, you know, how things are going to change. One thing in general, I would say, change is good. It doesn't have to be bad. You know, please trust that we, we're doing everything we can to make sure this is a successful transition. And we have learned a lot from the last few years. So that should hopefully help everybody think that we have, we're in the best position that we can be for this. Any other comments in the faculty report?
I will say, just building off of that, the, the general feeling I get is one of anxiety, of change, I'm saying, but also one of trust. Ellen and others have done a lot to build a community of trust in them as leaders. And there, there is trust as much as there is anxiety. There is also trust that they will have the school's best interest and the teacher's best interest at heart.
Yeah, absolutely. Glad to hear that. All right. So are there other comments for SAG? And we'll move on to the parent rep report, Marcy.
I actually have not heard feedback. I don't know if it's, if they're anything like me at the holidays. I think everyone's just got a million things going on. I even made a point to scroll through more recent Facebook comments just to see what was bubbling up. But all seems sort of quiet. So we'll see what happens in 2023.
That's good. I'm sure there's always stuff going on in parents' heads, but.
I think they're just too busy to get it out right now, this time of year. Yeah, other, other big things to worry about.
Absolutely. Great. Well, we always have a chance to hear the feedback in many different ways. I'm sure we will. All right. With that, moving on to chair business, let's talk, so we have some time today scheduled to talk a little bit about the strategic planning meeting. I think Ellen talked a little bit about this in her report. Mike, are you able to share?
Trying to connect it in for some reason.
All right. We had a couple of slides talking about the agenda, but even if that doesn't come up. Oh, maybe it's going. We have, we have Strategic Planning Task Force, which is basically Samini, Roger and I, we got together to discuss how we were going to use the time in January. So part of it is, you know, for those of you that have gone through this process before, we wanted to make sure we were not starting from scratch on this strategic planning process. We decided to focus on goals, even though goals is not the only part of what strategic planning is, but it's important parts of strategic planning. And then try to structure the day in a way that we can do some preparation before so we're not just using the whole time while we're together catching up with what has been done. But we also are leveraging that and catching up, again, not starting from scratch. So here's an agenda we're proposing. This might change a little bit for a couple of reasons. One, from your feedback, but also one thing that happened after we met is that, you may remember I mentioned a few meetings ago that Boardon Track, which is not only the system that we use to help us organize board meetings, but also a service that we get access to, has a consultant that stays in touch with us. And they reach out to us saying, you know, what's going on? What's new with board? And I say, hey, we're getting ready for strategic planning. And they say, we can help with that. So we still haven't gotten to the specifics about what that means. Part of it, it might be starting the day with some of them going over their presentations about board setting and, you know, management goals versus board goals. So that, they could take some of this time to do that. So we might change the time. My point is, I think it's helpful to start the day that way. Because if you remember previous conversations with that, there's always confusion or lack of clarity in what is a board goal as opposed to an administration goal or a management goal. So that's the first topic that we have in the agenda. We have 15 minutes for it right now, but again, the timing might change, especially if we can have Boardon Track presenting to us. Because I think they have a good insight and, you know, good way to help us make the most out of the day. So we'll use that for setting the stage. I do think that we can spend some time before that, reading up on that. And, you know, we chose just a short article that you can spend five minutes reading if you want to get ready for, you know, bringing that, ready for the conversation. So we have a little bit of a homework, but no worries, not too bad. Yeah, then we'll, we'll talk about that on the next page. But then after that, the other piece of input that I think is very helpful that we have from this year, and you may remember, if you were involved in the discussions for the search, that we were talking about the opportunity that we had. Because we have a search firm involved doing some assessment, and maybe that word is, it's not necessarily what was done, but, you know, coming to the school to understand its strengths and weaknesses. They provided that summary as part of the search process. That's a very helpful thing for strategic planning. Know where the strengths and weaknesses are. There's actually some feedback there about the board's role and how people perceive the board. So that is something worth reviewing together. So again, we'll share this in advance so we can see the actual report, but spending some time that day going over that. And then go in the actual goals. So again, for those of you that were involved in the past, we have a set of goals that we have brought forward, that we have a whole catalog of, and that's the famous spreadsheet that Samini put together. We want to use it as a starting point, so we're not starting from scratch again. So we'll look at those. Doesn't mean that we can't bring new ideas and whatnot, but it will prime the pump of the conversation and the brainstorming. So that's planned to go over that. We do have a set of, I think it's important to look at different time horizons. So you'll see there that we have three- to five-year goals and then 2023 goals. And then Ellen brought up a good point is that we've always done this in January, in their kind of calendar year goals, but it actually makes more sense for our goals to be aligned with the school year. So one of the things we can talk about is, do we want to, after, we're saying, we're going to do this in January, but after we have this meeting in January, do we want to consider doing strategic planning in June? And maybe we'll do another one in June. And maybe if by then we have a new Executive Director, then they can be talking about the process. So those are the kinds of things we can discuss. But again, we, we should look at two time horizons, three or five years and then the shorter-term one-year goals. And we do have some starting ideas of what those focuses should be. But then after that, we should break, have a breakup by committee because at the end of the day, the board goals are committee goals. And ideally, we'll see how time goes in the day. We can enter, if we enter those in Boardon Track, we'll be able to track. Because the biggest thing is, we should not forget about these goals after we walk out of there on Saturday. You know, then we, Sunday, we'll, we'll forget that we set these up. If we use Boardon Track, which I think is a great tool for keeping track of these, and we enter those goals there that day, then we won't have to come back as an action item to check whether we have none or none. And then we can use that for tracking on a regular basis. So that's the ideal situation that at the end of the day, we will have our goals entered in Boardon Track so we can track them. I don't think it's too ambitious of a target for that day to have that walking out on Saturday. As you see, we're estimated to be half a day wrapping up with lunch. We did add, which I think is great if we have Marcy join us, not only to be part of the process, but also to present to us that marketing and engagement toolkit. I don't know if that's a term I actually use. Something, that, that kind of toolkit would be very helpful. So to help use some of that time for her to share that with us, it's going to be a little bit of board education. So again, 9:00. We decided to do it here. Normally, we like to do this kind of enough sites so it feels different. We're doing things differently. Given that we haven't met in person much, it's going to feel different. Yeah, I don't think it was worth the expense of going to, you know, renting a room somewhere else. And so we'll do that here. And again, half a day or so. This might change, the times might change slightly, but we're trying to keep it to half a day so, you know, everybody can get on with their days after lunch. Did you miss anything, Samini? You want to add to that?
No, I mean, I think you covered most of it. I'm very excited to, the Marcy's stuff got added after, which is great. I appreciate that very much, I think. But I'm very disappointed because I'm not going to be able to be there.
You'll get a rather less.
Exactly. So like, whatever, that's what I'm going to get, which I would love. But I'm excited to put this together and help prepare before I get going. So if you'll have a productive day. And I appreciate the idea of going more towards a summer and a school calendar year strategic process. I think that actually we're ready to make that shift. And I like what you said about the, with the new ED being able to incorporate them into the process. I think that would be a good, good way for us to get going. So I think we should gear ourselves up for both the January as well as like a July essentially timeline and commit to it before we make time.
And you've been very helpful, Samini, with the structure, with keeping track of everything we thought in the past and we're not repeating ourselves. So even if you, you're not going to be able to be there, I think a lot of work are ready to obviously be ready to begin.
I have a question. Is that goal spreadsheet that's already been put in place, can that be circulated prior to that?
The one part I'm trying to do, yes, we should. What I'll say is that we'd like to differ because what we did last time was to really go through that process of generating the ideas, but then asking ourselves, what are we responsible for? And what is management responsible for? So I really, I think this is exactly why we want to structure it, but let's go refresh our memory on that so we don't fall into the, again, we're discussing those questions. I'd like to differ and then hand that off so that everyone's looking at the same thing and saying, well, what's missing? What can we start with? Some of the ideas that were generated today about what the end committee would do, those are where we actually fall into the four buckets we were looking at. It comes with our vision and mission. So all, I think those would be great. They're freshers as well as pathways we go through. So the committees can then really not just focus on the capital campaign, but really there's other parts that we have to be making progress on.
I guess I have two other points. One is, does Boardon Track have like, could they provide a facilitator?
So that, that's part of the question I asked when they said that we're willing to help. So I don't think we're going to have an onsite facilitator for the whole day. But they, and again, this is to be discussed. We're actually set up sometime next week to discuss. But they, at the very least, said we can present remotely on, for example, the topic of, how we set the goal and process and whatnot. They're going to help us clean up the agenda. Maybe they have suggestions on how this might be more efficient. I don't think we're actually going to get a facilitator, but that's up for discussion, so.
And then I guess the last point is, I mean, lots of times I, you know, I'm in meetings and goals are mainly not here with work. And then they get dropped because we don't talk about how to monitor the goal. So I really think it's important that, yes, here's a goal, but we need to talk about a way, a metric to monitor the, the progress we're making towards that goal.
Yeah. Well, I mean, A is mark goals so that we can measure. And B, I think every goal should have a measures of success.
Yes.
And put down as you put through it.
Completely agree. Now, I'm glad you asked about checking things in advance because that's the homework. So if we go to the next slide. And again, I'm going to wait until next week after talking to Boardon Track to see if they suggest anything differently. But expect something like this. And again, it's not a lot of work. It's not a lot of content, but I think if we all come, have a review, it's just like coming to the board meeting. We all read the minutes. We don't have to spend any time going over the minutes, right? So there's a short article. And again, if they suggest something different, this might be a little bit different. But understanding that difference between board goals versus management goals has always been something that we get stuck on. So if we kind of have a common framework to come into the day, that would be helpful. If you remember, when Jill presented a few months ago, our board assessment highlighted certain things that we could work on. So going back and checking that in Boardon Track. And again, I'll send an email with the links to this if you want to figure it out. But that might be worth reviewing and bringing fresh with us. Again, the outcome that came out of the search firm doing that interview process was very helpful. And then just think about goals that you might want to break. So even though we will do this together, you know, if you're doing it in your own time, you know, at the end of the day, you know, you're trying to put the kids to bed, thinking about goals for the school, you know, that might be a good way. So again, I'm not, I was thinking of sending an email right after this board meeting, but now that I know that we're going to be talking to Boardon Track next week, I'm going to hold off on sending this homework assignment, if you may, until then. But just know that there's a lot of reasons in Boardon Track that, one of the challenges is that we, when we look for, okay, board versus management goals, there were like 50 articles and, you know, picking the right one, that's not too much effort, but, you know, median enough was the challenge. But we'll, we'll hump that to make it one or more things to get ready for. I am looking forward to spending half of the day thinking about strategic things because one of the challenges of being on the board is that it's, when you're in a board meeting and we're voting on things and we're moving from one motion to the other, it feels very formulaic and very process-oriented. That's part of our role, but it's also part of our role to be strategic about the direction of the school. So that's why it's worth half a day on a Saturday for our time once a year. And I, the more we get ready for it to make the most out of that day, the more fulfilled we feel we're going to be on providing that direction to the school. So your time is very, very much appreciated. Any other questions? Any other questions? Requests for all we have for lunch? All right. Now, thank you, Mr. Rock.
Thanks, Shara.
All right. So that was the, just sharing of the strategic planning meeting. The next point of discussion, I think we talked about, you know, when we were going to do remote meetings versus in-person meetings. So our next board meeting is the early part of January, it's actually January 5th?
6th, I think.
5th or 6th? So about either way, it is? 5th or 6th?
It's 5th.
It's a Thursday. What other Thursday?
Sorry about that.
So the, I think, I forget what we said last time, but I think we're leaning towards remote. It is early January in New England. So we agree that we'll, yes, okay. So the next board meeting will be remote?
Yep.
So we go back to our Zoom world. And we have to land the launch and see what the new governor is going to do with that provision of a meeting. And then I guess we can talk in January about what we're going to do for February, right? We're going to pick now. Obviously, the strategic planning meeting will be in-person. I think that would be much, much more helpful for brainstorming and getting creative and thinking outside the box. All right. So I guess we'll, that was the biggest thing, making sure we're meeting remotely in January 5th. Committee reports, anything, I think, that wasn't covered already or on the consent agenda? I think Mark, you just mentioned the development committee report was pretty much covered.
Okay. Go ahead. I was going to add something, but it's, I'm going to put it under development. But it's just, it's really off something you just said. Do you want to give it back?
We're going to, I'm going to do a brief development report. I just wanted to actually talk really quickly about the alumni engagement committee, which is sort of a new initiative of the development committee. And Mark Vidal has been fantastic heading this effort up. I just want to throw out some props to the alums who have been participating in these meetings. Sasha Sun, Amelia Marsco, Stacia Wing, Clarice Avlak and Rashid Razoudin. Is that what his name is? Yeah. They're moving along with events that are going to happen more consistently. Talking about bringing the five-year reunion back and really cultivating an engaged alumni body, which is really, really exciting. I think that plus the addition of Marcie to the team is really taking APSA to that next level of really building that community that lasts beyond graduation, which is really important as we grow and continue to build and maintain the reputation and sort of the prestige here at APSA. So it all ties together. It's going to help us to raise money to improve buildings and programs and all that good stuff. So I just wanted to thank the alums who have been participating. Thank you, Mr. Vidal. Ellen and I have been popping in and out of the meetings when possible. But it's really kind of exciting and it's a good thing for the development committee to be finally focusing on. So.
Laura, could you send me those names?
Yes.
Thank you. And then this isn't really development, but it, but it's, it's really going to may impact our future. It may really impact our future. So the Charter School Association really does a great job on the state level advocating for charter schools and support for charter schools. Charlie Baker actually had been on a charter school board himself when, when he was younger. And he was, he was very supportive. And that's where a lot of the money and things have come, increases in, in building percentages of tuition and all. We have found out that Ms. Healy has put together her transition committee for education. There's 22 members on it. None of them represent charter schools. There's actually several members of that committee who do not support charter schools. So anything that you can do, petitions to sign, as we go through the years, I think we're really are going to need to watch the state and, and charter schools. I think that we're going to have challenges getting more seats, expanding. So just something to have on your radar as you're reading the news coming up in the next several years.
Trying to think how far we can go in suggesting any kind of advocacy.
I withdraw?
No, 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 no. I'm speaking for myself. You can say whatever you want. Yes.
You know, just keep, keep your eyes on the news.
Yeah.
Because our school needs to continue and that we need the support of the state and we're going to financially need the support of the state.
Well, we know what you're asking about, what actions we could take. I mean, at a minimum, if you have state reps at the local level.
Right. So as a citizen, I can say you guys, you guys should reach out to your elected officials and share your opinion. I won't tell you what that opinion should be. That's all I, right. I was just measuring my words. That's my words. It's not yours.
My words. It's just, it's a concern.
Yes. We don't have an advocacy committee. I think it's a bit of that.
That's why.
No, but it's, but it's an important thing to highlight. So thank you for bringing that up. Ed Committee?
Education Committee did not meet in November, and we will be meeting in December discussing the school, school surveys and starting the discussion about measuring success.
Great. Governance, we just met and.
Yeah, we also met on November 9th. So most of that has been with regard to this bylaw change that we just passed and also talking about onboarding and recruitment for new board members.
And I'll, I'll take that opportunity to remind everybody, if your term's coming up at the end of the year, or even if it's not, keep in mind that we'll have some board members stepping off of the board. So we need to bring in new candidates. We are trying to bring in non-parent members to kind of go back to that 50-50 unofficial target that we have of having community members that are non-parents be a significant part of the board. So if you know anybody, and actually, I think everything comes back to the development discussion because when we talk about, you know, how colleges are looking at other things like internships and whatnot, that says a lot about the importance of our partnership with our corporate, you know, the corporate citizens of our community. So building those relationships helps with something that, you know, has to do with the future of our students. It also helps because those organizations could then become supporters of the school financially. It also helps because those organizations have employees that might have an interest in being part of the governance of the school. So just reach out, try to find whoever you, you know, who did you know? I think that was a good tag when I, when we were talking about kicking off the capital campaign. Reach out, looking for board members, reach out, looking for partners that might want to do some research with us and internships and any other kind of thing. I think we all know that, but it's good to remind ourselves to keep an eye out for that. So.
STEM Soring Eagles Foundation is also looking for board members. They, their bylaws are five. They are just recently down to four. Very important. And really would like to strengthen and empower that, that committee to be involved in the fundings.
Governance, I think we saw, we talked earlier about the change in the account and whatnot. Is there anything else?
Yeah. The, in, in the January meeting, we'll be coming forward with a proposal in regards to the chiller replacement of infrastructure for our existing building.
There's part of the package. You've got to sneak through. Anything else? All right. So that was the committee report. So we're ready for meeting wrap-up. Were there any action items or anything?
Oh, was there an interior from the last meeting that requested that we do an OML training for the board?
Yes. We talked about that in governance. What, I forget.
I think we can do it in January if you want. Or we had talked to, yeah. Right. And then a link to, yeah.
Yeah. Oh, yes. We talked about sharing, so everybody could do the online thing, but then use the time in the board meeting as a, to review that training, right? So Sarah, that could be, that's, because the next thing I was going to talk about is actually, sorry, the deadline for January. Because of the holiday and we're meeting early in the year, we want to publish the agenda sooner or later in December before the break. So if that's a good agenda item, start with open to you all, training. If anybody thinks of anything, or, you know, there's anything from the committees that needs to be added to the agenda for January, please let Sarah know just to make sure we can publish agenda early just because of the holiday.
Well, can, can we also make sure that we get the link for whatever online resources for OML? Maybe before the holidays? So.
Yes.
You have downtime. Take that and do it then.
Do you have that handy, Sheila? I know you were.
Yeah.
Okay. So I guess an action item for Sheila. You got that, Sarah?
Yes.
Thank you. So again, any agenda items? Do you have anything right now? Please let me know. But if not, you know.
We can talk with the alum. There'll be two votes at least, there'll be a minimum of two votes coming out of the governance committee for the January agenda.
And that's for the chiller?
Well, it's for chiller and one is for the officially resetting the accounts.
Quick, I'm not sure if we had this in the agenda, but just a quick update. I think I did mention from the search, ED search committee. We just, I think it was today or yesterday, got a list of names from the search firm of initial applicants and no information other than names. And they said they're going through that first stage of filtering and whatnot. So these are confidential. You know, we can't share the names or who's in the pool. But I got to say, it's a healthy pool. It's a good, it's good to see that there's been response and there's interest in the school, which is not surprising because we're a very attractive school to be a part of. So that's one of the good things that the search firm keeps reminding us that we should feel confident that we're going to find the best executive director for the next phase of APSA because we're such a great school that everybody wants to be a part of. So good progress. We're going to start with interviews. Say, you know, they started interviewing the search firms, takes the first pass, interviewing some candidates. And the search committee will start meeting them, I believe January was kind of that timeframe, right? Yeah. So we're still in practice with the timeframe that we have shared in the past. We'll, we'll keep everybody updated.
I just want a second that very cool piece.
It was, yeah.
I was waiting to see, okay, what's it going to look like? And will we have enough to sit through everything you said?
And people with educational background.
Yeah.
All right. That being said, well, any questions about search? Keep reminding ourselves, this is one of the most important things we're doing in the next six months. We'll do it very thoroughly, very carefully. Hey, media assessment, any feedback, anything, any challenges? Good to see everybody in person. Yes. We skipped the pizza today because we left a lot of pizza last time. So if everybody's okay with that, we'll continue that way. I mean, it was good. I, I came here early, even before governance, so anybody wants to get together, you know, before a few minutes, just informally. This is not part of the meeting, but just, that's what the pizza gave us, an opportunity to just say hi to each other before the formalities of the meeting. So even if we don't have a feedback, maybe in case, but if anybody feels strongly about being fed, we can settle this. Anything else? Then with that, I'll take a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn?
Second.
So Samini seconded by Laura. And we didn't have anybody down, so we'll have to check on that. All right. Those in favor? Aye. Anybody against? No? Motion passes. Thank you very much. Have a great holiday, everybody, if I didn't see you before January.